I was there, yeah. I went to Albany yesterday. Yeah, I know, I'm ready for that.
Jason, that's why. He says it's all set.
Thank you.
I'd like to travel meetings in order, please stand and join me.
To allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our board meeting. We're gonna go ahead and just get right to it, to our budget workshop number three. So, I would like to turn it right on over to Mr. Van Plaatsen.
Alright, thank you and welcome, everyone. Tonight is our final budget workshop where we will be adopting a total spending plan for May 21st vote for our voters. Before we get right into the presentation, it's been a whirlwind 72 hours. The state finally has a budget, so we have those numbers. And then, obviously, we're going to need to finalize our tax levy, which you knew coming in. Next board meeting, May 9th, is our budget hearing where we will be presenting to the public. It's a public hearing. And then, May 21st is the budget vote. So, the next 30 days are going to be pretty busy. So, let's get started. I probably should've just clicked the slide. So, there you go, there's all the information. So, again, the next 20, 30 days are gonna be pretty busy, but again, we hope to leave here tonight with a final spending plan and ready to move forward. So, tonight's objectives, again, the proposition that we put to the voters is a spending plan, and that spending plan will be agreed to tonight. And then, obviously, part of that spending plan is the tax levy that we agree to, and then file that with New York State and move forward. This has not changed. I will go relatively quick because a lot of this is repeated, so if there's a question, just stop. This has not changed, although we have updated, we do have some new long-range projections with some different variables just to look at. At this point, foundation aid number two, we're not going to be impacted, but part of the whole process of getting this budget, state budget approved, is there's still some potential changes to foundation aid that Governor Hopel has mentioned, and they're still, they're gonna be on the table, maybe not this year, but in the future. So, foundation aid could be impacted in the future. Right now, it's now. So, more to come on that. And then, three and four and five are still true. So, we're still trending positively, and our reserves are fine. So, recap, you've seen this now, we added the three positions, and with the assumption below, now Cynthia and I apologize, I should've mentioned, with the inflation adjustment, what is our net impact of the inflation adjustment? Can we have that number?
Um, yeah, it's a little, it's around $100,000 with the impact.
So, there was an inflation adjustment that was agreed to, so we do have a small, small decrease as well. So, one of the scenarios is we wanted to look at variables that could impact future years. So, the three scenarios highlighted in red, and then, for each of those, you see what happens in outer years. So, you know, the first, the best-case scenario is the one that we're gonna present tonight, that we go out at the tax levy of 2.96, and that all other information is known as of today. So, we will be recommending the first option, the best option. But okay, and worse, just to give you some, you know, some potential what-ifs. Now, the worst-case scenario where there's an actual reduction in state aid for three years, we're not anticipating that today, but you always wanna assume it could happen, and it has happened, and I shared some historical information from the past. So, it could, but we're not trying to scare people either. Right now, we're looking at the best-case scenario as of today.
Under what circumstances, Jason, would it get less? Tax levy be 0%?
Well, that's-
I don't think we would do that, right, unless it got, the budget got rejected, right?
Right, could be, right, right, right. We wouldn't be recommending it if we were seeing foundation aid of negative 2% to your point, yeah, 100%.
That is something I was thinking about today, Greg, as I was looking at this, I was thinking like, 'cause in my mind, it's like, we're going out at 2.96, why would there be? And then, I wondered like, oh, I'm new to this, so should I be thinking about what if the voters don't approve it? Then what? Like, what are all the things I'm supposed to be thinking about when I'm approving this? 'Cause I'm like, we're going out big guns, 2.96 vote.
Right.
Am I worried that people aren't gonna? We've always passed the budget, right?
We passed the budget. I think the only year it didn't pass in the last 20 years was 2006. So, in a defeated budget, you have three options.
Okay.
You can take the same budget, 30 days later, bring it to the voters in June, and vote for the exact same thing and hope that it passes. You can amend the budget amount. Typically, you would decrease it because you're trying to show that you're, you know, reducing spending if that's an issue. Or you can adopt a contingency budget right on the spot and not go out for another vote. In a contingency budget, it's typically a zero tax levy increase. So, in that scenario, like Greg said, if our budget was defeated in May, on May 21st, and we went to a contingency budget, we would be looking at a 0% increase.
But the second, is the second option that should it get defeated at 2.96, we go out at 2.14?
No.
No, we decide when it goes out.
Then, then we'll just re-
Last year, we were in such good shape that we went out at zero.
Yeah, that was surprising.
We were kicking around 2.14 at the last strategic fiscal planning meeting because of the fund balance.
Right.
You know, ideally, we have to vote today between top one and the middle one.
Right, and I was trying to figure out, what am I supposed to be thinking about?
We would, if it, if the budget failed, we would revisit it then.
We would- Well, good to know that, I thought it was just like-
So, you're not voting on like-
No school for the next year, I don't really know what happened.
You're not voting on like a Plan A and a Plan B.
These scenarios were because of the state, they were talking about changing foundation aid formulas, they were talking about the inflation adjustment averaging over more years, I don't know what they ended up doing, but so-
So, you, so if the, if the budget came out and it was restored to the law that was turned until a couple of days ago, you would've had a $471,000, I think, dollar increase in foundation aid versus what the governor proposed, and so I think that's what was leading to the fall.
So, instead of a $400,000 gain, we have a $100,000 loss of what was best.
A $100,000 gain.
Oh, we did get a gain, I thought he said we were down $100,000.
I missed a vote.
Okay.
No, not you.
100 instead.
Sometimes it is.
100 instead of 400, right.
So, yeah, and again, we, so we then, there was a, an inquiry about using the same scenario, but adding five positions, and then, we did one for seven. So, these variables stay the same, it's just adding more positions into that salary. So, the thing to focus on would be 27, 28, 26, 27, what's the impact of those additional positions? So, if we added five positions instead of the three that we're requesting, you see the impact in all of those scenarios. And then, with seven positions total, so four above what we're proposing, and what you're seeing is basically, in the best-case scenario at the top, we're still showing a deficit in that outer year. But the good thing is those, you know, 24, 25, 26, 27, or 25, 26, we're showing still some significant positive budget performance, so. But, things can change, and we want to be cautious, and Cynthia, who's done this, you know, longer than any of us here, it's a cycle, recessions happen, New York State gets a little antsy, so we're just trying to be, we're trying to be, you know-
You can't just, when we have a surplus, that means we need to put away stuff-
Right.
-to the reserves, et cetera. When it's a deficit, that means we need to take some from the reserves or other areas to get them. So, obviously, ideally, $0 is a perfect world, you know, your expenses equal your revenues. So, that's just kind of what we're doing. We've never had a projection, all the years I've been on the board, where that all year didn't show deficits.
Oh, that's-
Because of the conservatism-
You're always conservative.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's-
Jason, are you just, or is it just like, you're just averaging what the five and the seven, or do you have a list of like, what these additional positions are, depending on what we're approving?
No, I mean, there was, obviously, there was a proposal that you received.
I mean, I know, we, I was-
We were specifically interested in the music-
You did ask, and that's, and I think-
Yeah.
We asked Jason to look at that and for the five to add the two additional music position.
So, the seven is just if we added the two, like to it even on top?
The five would be adding.
The music, and then, the seven is just?
I don't know what the seven is.
The seven was just to add more to see what it looks like.
Just to see what it looks like. I have to be.
Yeah, it's a, it's a art trick. So, again, even with that scenario, we're still trending good in 27, 28. The goal, though, will be to, you don't wanna get to 27, 28, have that deficit, say, well, I guess we're just gonna use reserves to fill it, even though we may have them, that gap is still gonna exist the following year until you address it. So, what we're gonna try to do is, over the next three years, you try to even out that deficit so that it's a zero, and then, you just keep moving forward until, you know, you don't, you don't wanna cut expenditures unnecessarily, so we're in good shape, we're in good shape. I don't wanna sound so simplistic, but we're in good shape. I think comparison to other schools across the region that are in a much different position. So, we'll count our blessings. No change here, again, district enrollment is stable. These were done in February, I update them every few months, I'd say every three months, quarterly. That number has not changed, you'll see it in the third quarter data dashboard, so again, we're still looking favorably from an enrollment standpoint. And that just is what it looks like. And so, a smooth line is obviously stable. The slight decreases, you'll see it somewhat, you know, like at elementary, that can change with enrollment in kindergarten, first grade, so we're looking good, we're in good shape. Again, this is another success. We have money in our savings accounts, we can certainly address future issues, and we can address issues now, so we're in a really good position from a, from a reserve standpoint. And that final number changes, obviously, right up until June 30th, when you have, you know, what your actual services, so it's a floating number for- Okay, so this is our final draft, and you'll see it's an increase over 5%, which we recognize, you know, that's a large increase, but we're also dealing with some pretty large increases, and I'll explain the one area in particular, but we have removed that supervisor of facilities and operations, so it's off the table as a consideration, just wanted to make that public. Significant increase in the BOSI's budget, over $1 million alone in special ed needs, and that's a couple of factors. That's increased requests for services, so wanting more. And also, BOSI's budgets are going up, and so, you're addressing that through, you know, our costs too, so.
Can I ask a question regarding that?
Yeah.
This is just to be informed.
Yep.
So, on our agenda, we are approving the final request for services to BOSI.
Yes.
So, and I-
That number up there.
That, okay, I was wondering if that's what matters in this.
Yep.
Okay.
The, you'll see, when you looked up on our request for service, you're likely, that number will be just a little bit higher, because in some cases, might mightly in uncertain placements, it could happen, you don't wanna request them on our request for service because you pay for them upfront, so you might, you might save budget for five, request four, and then, we would additionally request during the school year, an additional, just to be, to be a conservative in that. But when you look, if you try to compare, it'll be just a little bit higher.
Okay, okay.
That's, obviously, that was an area, and I think you all understand why because of what we're, what we're doing.
Those increases are needed too, right?
So, that's our, that's our spending plan, and I'll get to it, it's easier to read, I'll break it out. So, again, here's our projection expenditures, there's that noted increase for placements.
Under contractual expenses projected under, for 20, okay, for 20? This number here is a million dollars more than I have from the long-range projection.
What's the date of that?
December 20, this is what I just got, what Jeff said.
Was there, is there other things in there? Is that all those same lines?
No.
Is equipment lumped into contractual?
In the long-range projection, in the long-range projection, utilities have broken out, where in the budget are contracts?
This is even higher than that, okay, but I'm sure that you-
So, this one includes utilities, so it would be higher than the long-range projection, is that what you're seeing?
What I have here is $4,500,000, and it's broken out, it says all other contractual materials and supplies. And what we've got there is three more, right? So, it's like 600,000 off.
So, that's from December, Lynn?
I don't know what date that is.
That's the long-range projection that-
Yeah.
Put your label down there, I'll extract it.
Yeah, it's-
Terrible spine, right?
No, I think it is Shepherd's, like, carryover processes.
Oh, gotcha.
The long-range projection is based on actual expenditures, and is some, this is obviously based on budget, but in the actual expenditures, you had $871,000 of carryover in conferences from '22 to '23.
I jumped into that.
And then, they're included in that.
Thank you, okay.
So, then moving on to our revenue, and again, this is assuming the 2.96, our tax levy, and then, state aid is the second, was our first largest, this tax levy is our largest So, the other, again, it's not a large dollar amount, but people sometimes ask, you know, where, what is in others, so we always break out each other. If there's any questions on that.
It's pilots, payments, and no taxes, so we had two of them at one point, which was the Good Shepherds in the money pipeline, and one of them came off the books.
Good?
Okay.
Sorry. So, this is just what we use to explain the additional investments we were making. This is our strategic plan, our focus areas and goals. These are our priorities, what we're working on, and then, we have each area. So, I tried to highlight in blue where the investments are impacting, what they're impacting. So, you've seen this now, for this, the third presentation. So, this number right now, what we are currently built is with those three positions, and then, again, you had us create scenarios, but right now, the budget as built has the three positions in them, and those are the three. So, the social worker, which, again, you've seen this before, elementary teacher enrollment, we're continuing, trying to address specifically at Main Memorial. And then, the music teacher to address more program, to give kids more options, and you'll see a little bit more about that, there is some more investment there we would like to make. And then, these you've seen, so there's no change here, these are the programs that we're currently looking at to offer and integrate. And whereas, since BOSI's able, then obviously, we get aid back on that expenditure. Some other additional programming, yeah, still studying WAZA, we don't have a number identified, but we're still looking at that based on the presentation that was given to all of you, all of us. And then, that contract will be renewing July 1st, and that's the additional. So, so first decision, tax levy. Right now, the proposed, that's the levy limit, so anything over 2.96 requires us to go out and get 60% of overapproval. At 2.96, we simply need 50.1% to pass, it's a simple majority. And this is a normal conversation, so I know we talked about 2.14 based on the conversation last meeting, it felt like 2.96 was where people were landing, and we built it as 2.96. So, we can pause there, is there any, do we wanna revisit this? Are we comfortable with 2.96? Because if we, if we're not, we change it, we literally have to make adjustments to, and that's why Cynthia has her computer up and ready to go, so we can adjust the budget.
I did have one question with Mike's plane, this, did I, I thought I saw, when I was looking at the, you know, I was looking at the previous budget presentation prior to tonight, was there a need for another English, English and language teachers, a new position?
Correct.
So, that would be four, right?
Correct. Now, we had-
But you're covering that.
Correct. So, it's not, we're covering it, it's a new position, I'll get to that, it's a new position, but we had funds in the budget to cover it.
Okay.
And it's an emerging need, so the reality is, we could, here's the reality, population could drop 20% by September, and maybe we don't need that position. The population right now is, we're pushed max at three, and we'd like to keep Main Memorial students at Main Memorial instead of busing them to Homer Bridge. The fourth position would allow us to do that and still give us capacity at the high school and middle school, but as Julie has reminded me, it's truly based on enrollment. So, we felt like, we've got a pool of, we had some good, because we had to hire a clerk, we had a good candidate pool, and we felt like now would be the time to do this, and then, you know, you don't wanna say to somebody, you might not be needed in September, but right now, we need them, we'd rather have them, so yes, we have budgeted for that.
So, my question is, and again, I realize that I don't, that I've done this before, the three positions, the five positions, the seven positions, are we making a decision on that at some point, or we're just deciding on the tax levy, and then, you and your team decides what positions are higher?
The formal recommendation from myself and the team is three.
It's three.
It doesn't have to go to five or seven. Now, if things keep looking favorably, and those numbers are good going into 24, 25, so let's fast forward to six months from now, maybe we do look at adding additional faculty members, but we didn't feel comfortable at this point adding any more new positions because things like ESL coming up, where it's an emerging need, or class size reduction, where it's August and we've got influx of kids. So, we need some flexibility to be able to adjust needed versus just continuing to add new. That was the rationale. Now, if you said, we wanna support two more positions and we support it, then you obviously have the authority to override that recommendation. We just need to know because we need to make sure the documents are, you know, reflective, but that's why this is the budget workshop, this is the conversation, this is the time to have that discussion, so.
And if you didn't see in the budget that came out, the Rockefeller Center is actually gonna do a state aid analysis, and Cynthia and I were just talking, I said to Cynthia, what do you think the goal of that is? The goal of it is to reduce the amount of state aid the state's paying. They can't afford it. So, you know, to Jason's point, things look good, it's always this cycle, you know, like, you know, our fear always is, we add, we add, we add, and then, in five years, when things have to be reduced, people are like, what are you doing? You know, why, you didn't plan well, you were driving, but we, we can't control that state aid number. So, I think December 1st, Cynthia's at the report due date on paper for the, so by December 1st, that report's supposed to come out, which is supposed to paint the picture for state aid for next year's budget. So, in my mind, I'd really like to wait and see what that looks like to say, how, because they just, they can't keep forwarding it at the state level. You know, they're Rob and Peter to pay Paul, you know, schools squeak a lot, they try to, you know, keep us happy, but at some point, when they can't afford it, and they have to pull that purse string, it's usually not a little bit, it's usually like, it's a big whack that you take, so.
So, Kathy, to answer your question, yes, we are, need to decide on this tax levy, and yes, we even need to decide on what they are proposing, because that's right, as the budget with the three positions and the tax levy being at that rate, because that's what's on our agenda to approve. But if we wanna go ahead and make a change, as if like, well, we wanna go ahead and do the five positions or something, then we need to also decide that now, so we can make that change on our agenda when it comes time to approve that. Excess? So, we're deciding on both, really, approving, approving the tax levy and then approving the budget that's proposed to us.
So, one thing that, you know, took a while, what Jeff was talking about, when the, when state aid got reduced significantly during the, you know, the gap elimination-
Right, right.
Okay. Prior to that, we had gone out like three points under the tax levy limit, okay? That compounds every year.
Yeah.
Okay, so that number, I don't remember what it was, but it was millions of dollars that could've made up that gap, okay? Because of that decision that was made, you know, three or four years before, and I'm not, you know, arguing either way, but I think that, you know, that's the kind of thing when you decide we're not gonna go out with a tax levy limit, could happen, right? And, you know, I mean, 2009 was significant.
Right, well, we hope that doesn't happen again.
Right, right, right. You got devil's advocate, Greg, we didn't have $17 million in reserves to add.
No, well, yeah.
You know, you got with the- We did, but we spent it over three years to avoid going out, so, right? So, you know, just-
Yeah, that's the other side of the coin.
You know, so, I don't know, I'm good with either one, I favor the 2.14, because I think our balance sheet is healthy. Even with the current year, we're still gonna be adding $3 million more reserves with this current budget, with three positions already built in, to the $17 million. So, we're gonna get $20 million plus of reserves next year at the same time with this, even with the 2.14, it's only at the $150,000 difference between the 2.96 and 2.14 for the current, but then, it's compounded.
I hear you, I'm more like, we can go out at 2.96, it's not that big of an increase, and maybe we can add an elementary school music teacher because they really need it.
As what Mike's saying here, that we are in a good place within its 112, that can be sustained by the positions.
Right, I think, I still think you could, you know, no one's a fortune teller.
Right, right.
You're not, but the positions, the numbers we have there are very conservative, you know, even though we're at 1% over the next three years, if you threw a dollar there, you're probably gonna get that 1%, that's probably the case, you know, you know, but you could probably put five positions even with a 2.14, and I still think we could save, even with a 1% conservative, which you could hire, but I'm okay with either one, but I still think we're okay even with the five, get five positions plus 2.14. I mean, I think there's gonna be reductions in that percentage, just based on some of the discussions that's happening.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, a lot of those, those three, you know, old harmless, elimination of that, the inflation calculation averaging, you know, over 10 years or whatever, which I thought was ridiculous. You know, that speaks to me that, don't expect, you know, a lot of state aid increase over the next three years. But I understand where Mike's coming from.
Well, the only thing I would say to Mike's point is that if the budget stays healthy and it performs the way we think it's going to, then, then having this conversation next year is still a viable conversation. Now, that's all, I mean, we're just trying to, and again, I get it, we lived through 2011, 15, you know, we laid people off, we didn't have reserves, so a little of it is, you know, you grew up in the depression, so you're a little nervous about, you know, where the future holds. On the flip side, we don't wanna sit here and be, you know, gorging ourselves in reserves and then saying, you know, oh, yeah, we could've done X, Y, and Z. So, we're just uncomfortable right now getting too far out, and this is just from my shoes, so you could obviously veto that. We're just a little uncomfortable, we've made huge investments in- We've made huge investments in positions, and we've been fortunate because we had, obviously, foundation aid, we had federal stimulus funds. We just want to get a year out to see if it's really going to hold true. And then next year, you know, whether we're still addressing enrollment sizes or we're adding additional positions at elementary, we'll feel better. That's all. So I just put that out there, that's all. We'll just feel better after one more year. Because if something falls apart in the next six to eight months, schools will be hit from the state. The state has no qualms about impacting schools. Now, we have reserves. We can get through the next couple rocky years if it happened. But that, you don't fill potholes with sand, right? I mean, it's going to wash away. You've got to make cuts to expenditure. So we're just a little hesitant. I'll just leave it at that. Don't want to scare anybody, but that's, that's the rationale. That's the rationale.
Well, personally, I'm, I'm in support of the 2.96 tax levy. And I think it's minimal dollars to the taxpayers between the 2.14 and 2.96. And with the education that we want to provide everybody, I'm, I'm in support of that for the tax levy, for the tax levy conversation.
I'll agree with you, but I think we should add two more positions.
Well, so that's going to be the next.
I think we should go with the five, because like I said, we're healthy.
Right.
So if we're not going to go with 2.14, go with 2.96 and add two more positions to the list.
Right. So first, let's like just make a decision on the tax levy, and then I think that's the next thing that we, right, need to decide on, so.
I agree.
2.96. 2.96. 2.96. Okay.
2.96. I think we should add the ESL 2.96.
What do you think, Greg?
BSOL teacher, which is not really into five, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's already, that's already-
It's an emerging need.
Yeah.
That was part of the original three, right? Or was already budgeted or?
Yeah.
The third one was budgeted.
Okay.
The fourth one is new.
Right.
Okay, so we're good-
But it is in the budget that we're-
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good with the 2.96 tax levy, so that can stay the same. So the next conversation is looking at, which I don't know, maybe you want to go back to the slide between the three and the five. And then just to clarify, like, when we had this discussion, that five positions, those two additional positions, were going to be, to be able to bring in music programs at the elementary level.
Correct.
Is there like a four position option?
So I do bring that up.
That's what I'm wondering, like, why did we go to five?
You know, I'm questioning that, but the problem was-
That's why I asked about the ESL, because then that seventh would become eight, right?
The problem, that's why I asked that question, Kathy, but what was explained was because we were two elementary buildings, and it was also-
And one so much, we don't get it.
Nope.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I was just trying my head on my-
I know.
I'm guessing the music teacher was last board meeting when I wasn't here, because I feel a little lost on that part of the conversation. There was, so, a number of weeks ago, and I won't remember, there was a recommendation from the music department to add three music positions. And so when we had the board meeting, I brought up to Jason, like, "Could we fit in these three positions?" And they, because they were already going to do one.
Right.
Okay. Jason's recommendation was, "Let's do the one at the middle school."
The one is going to be the middle school.
Because there's a huge high spare. And so I said, "Could we just see what it would look like if we added the other two?"
Yep.
I'm just explaining it to him.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it's no bringing that top one, yeah.
I mean, if you say that, Mike, I'm with you, because I mean, I look at red numbers, and it makes me nervous, but you do this, you've done this. Greg says we've never had, not had red numbers.
Don't worry about the red numbers. You got six, 10 million, 13, you got 40 million-
I mean, that is very healthy to me.
Before you get to the negative, that's just the figures. That's not with the reserves already at 17 million before this. Well, yeah, with this number, you have 17 million. So you've got, don't worry about that last red.
That's where I was, but I don't want to be, I, Jason, I respect-
They're recording.
Jason, I respect what you're saying, though. I am not discounting what you're saying.
No, 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 and I'm saying, you know, to Mike's point, you're right. I mean, so, don't take, I'm giving you my lens based on history. Could we use the positions? Can we use the position? Sure, we can use the positions. And if we can afford them, then that's even about-
I'm the person who got all the emails from all the parents in 2011, going, "Please don't."
But Mike, still, when you look at that, and you're right, here's, here's the dilemma. We keep padding reserves, and at some point, what do you do when you have no longer places to put reserves? I get it, you know?
Right, right. Or you go out of the lower tax levy.
Right, right, right.
I agree, though I'm going to, we had an interesting meeting today, and a .5 position was talked about in this meeting that we had, and I think the impact of that additional position would be substantial for the elementary school. So my scenario, my ask is the 2.96 with, I don't know, with six instructional positions and them being split, the sixth position being split in hand. Does that make sense to you?
What's the sixth position?
The sixth position is that position that was talked about at the meeting we had for this meeting, about what they could do if they had a place and they had somebody consistently to handle it.
Like, so are you talking about the-
Yeah.
Did you talk about half positions, that's just 50 grand, all in labor benefits?
Depending on the position.
If it's a halftime position, it's full benefits, full out.
If it's teacher aid, then it's-
75 grand, probably.
Yeah. If it's a teacher, it's 100 plus.
But if it's a teacher assistant, it's not, right?
Teacher, teaching assistant?
Teaching assistant. There were aides, and then there were-
Teaching assistants.
Teaching assistants.
Yep.
Now, I think the impact that that position could provide-
That was to cover what?
We go ahead and, yeah, yeah.
We're in the meeting.
That means, because people can't-
Follow me, because I'm talking in code?
You're talking in code. We're all like- We had our talk with the superintendent in board president meeting today, and, you know, and as-
What floor were you on?
We were at Maine Memorial. As you should have saw in thought exchange, the biggest challenge is behavior, discipline, accountability, and so forth. So I'm not sure what position you're talking about.
We were talking about creatively scheduling someone who could cover like an, like an elementary AIS type situation, but, you know, on the elementary-
An interventionist.
Yeah. And a consistent place to be. And just the impact that that would have, this group we were with today talked about the impact it would have on discipline, how impactful it can be. And when I look at these numbers and I think about that, I know we have space constraints there, but in the ability to have, not to creatively schedule, because that always makes me nervous, those words put together, but a consistent person who can handle that situation, I think, could alleviate, could add so much to our elementary schools. So I'd like to suggest six positions, but one of them is split.
Does that have to be six, or could that be-
One of the five.
No, I think that these are all-
Spoken.
Spoken, yes.
Well, what are the five? I don't think five. What are the five, no?
I'm just getting nervous, I'm just going to say, I'm getting nervous, because we've talked about some of those positions out there as an admin team that has taken a ton of feedback, and we've had a list for a couple of years of needs that have been identified.
Good.
And so, but now, like, we're just going to these positions, and we're throwing out more music, and we're throwing out this, and I'm not saying they're not valuable, but I feel like we probably, I don't know, like, I don't-
This is just trying to us.
To a number, or to say, "Oh, let's put in," I mean, I'm looking at like AIS intervention, literacy needs that we have, and I'm thinking, "I don't know if that's," I mean, hasn't been, you know, so I just think to put numbers on specific positions that we want without really having a discussion is a little self-spiriting.
Yeah, but that's what this is.
So you, right, you saw the proposal for the music, which, you know, with five. That was only one built. So I would just caution that, before we put out additional positions, why don't we wait, see what our needs are? If we have a surplus, we can always go back to CBO and say, "Hey, listen, we have an emerging need. We'd like to add X." And then, or we could look at our own staff and say, "Can we reevaluate? Maybe we could use somebody currently on staff." So before we just jump to that one, because we have three more buildings to talk about.
Oh, we understand.
But your points, take it. Yeah, no, no, no. And it may happen, it may happen, it's just-
Yeah, at both elementary.
I don't think we really have enough information-
Exactly. That's what I'm talking about, those half, you got those half positions.
But that's what I feel, it's like, I don't know if there's enough information to really-
Well, I think we go up to five, then we have flexibility beyond the three that we planned for. Is that what you're saying?
Flexibility meaning?
Well, I think these five positions are spoken for. We know exactly where they're going to go. If we need flexibility, it's going to have to come for additional to last.
That's where, if it's the six to eight months that Jason's talking about, things still look really positive.
Where's the five, I don't know what the five positions are.
So it's your three originals.
The three originals.
And then the two, two musical music.
Which we've never discussed. Like, that's, I think that's Julie's point. Like, there's, I mean, I say for my, there's a lot of needs in this district, reading, literacy, math. And that's where I'm like, I just don't, like, we're just throwing it to two, like, with no discussion before this, it's just in there and accounted for. That's ramallah law.
There was discussion.
Well, that has come, that is what's come to the board.
Look, no math, no literacy needs, no reading, no-
That has not come to the board.
Okay.
I mean, they certainly, it's not anything we're against.
I would say, look at Julie and take, that's Julie's job.
As far as Julie's reports and everything, I don't think we're like oblivious to that.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah. Prioritizing needs, there's needs, there's a force of needs.
Right. Well, I mean, we were, you know, we decided as an admin team, like, this is what we look forward. I mean, if there's additional money, we're asking for positions, I can, well, we're going to look at literacy. I guarantee you.
Yeah, we're approving five positions. We're not approving, they're going to decide who the-
That was my question when I asked 20 minutes.
Yeah, we're just approving the five to go in there. We're saying it's accounted for, like, yeah.
Well, there was a proposal for two additional music teachers for a total of three, which you were saying.
Right.
So I thought when we said we were looking at two more, that's what you were talking about.
That's what, that's what we were asking, yeah. Because we had that proposal. We thought, we, you know, were informed, I don't know how many years ago, there was music that started at younger ages in the elementary level, so we thought that, so as a conversation, that that might be beneficial to try to bring back to our district, to our students to give us.
But to your point, Julie, back when we talked about the last board meeting, no one said like, "Valid point, but also we need these other positions." So now, I'm not disagreeing that it wasn't discussed, but no one at the last board meeting said what you just said, so.
Correct. Because we could have, we could hire people, we could hire 20 more physicians.
Right.
You know, we don't have places for everyone, and, you know, again, you know, some needs are known, some aren't, but we're addressing the shortage at the elementary, which was addressed through that proposal, which we know. We have reduced music at the elementary level significantly since 2011.
Right, so at the last board meeting, when the conversation started, Kathy asked for the, right.
But at that time, no one said like, "Oh, well, if we're going to talk about new positions, we should consider these as well." I'm not opposed to considering others, just no one brought it up. Because we were-
Right, but it's not a timeframe, we're kind of-
You know, it'd be nice to see, maybe for next budget or whatever, like, hey, you have your budget of 72 million, and then you have like a heat map, like an addendum saying, "If we had a gazillion dollars, these are the hot items I need for literacy."
Exactly.
I mean, you know, one, two, one, so you gotta get all, all for you.
We have no insight into that at all.
You know, he said he could get, or 20, sure, he had 20 easily, but just like a hot map, that would be-
Well, you did, you got enrollment, which is class reduction, which we're addressing, social worker, which is SEL help at the high school, which now makes that model the same as ever the building.
Which is great.
And a bonus of a music teacher that's helping expand offerings at the middle school. So, and, oh, an emerging need of ESL and an emerging need potentially of classroom reduction if enrollment goes up. So that's the recommendation. The recommendation was three positions. If we want to talk about five or seven, you're right. The only two on the table right now are the two music positions. That was a proposal that, that we looked at. Well, we didn't discuss, but we, you have. So my recommendation was the three, obviously, you probably can afford two more. We can certainly spend the time right now to have that discussion around the law, but there's not, I don't have data to show you, other than enrollment's going to be a factor, special ed needs are always a factor, and if there's some other emerging need like ESL, which we're addressing. So after that, it's, I guess, music would be the next area of consideration.
I respect that you guys are researching on that, you know, that's a long term.
Yeah, and it's a fluid number. It's always going to be fluid, because, you know, needs come and go.
This conversation about what the priority needs are could change in another month, or change in another, and by September, I mean, that's, you know-
Which is why my recommendation is three, and to see the lay of the land. And you're right, until we have data to say to you, here's other needs-
I don't care if it's a five, but I'm just saying that that, you know, maybe I support music a lot, but maybe one of those can't be music teacher in September, maybe it's going to be something else, right? That's all I'm saying.
Or you could authorize five positions, two more than what we've authorized, and then we come back to you with what we think the two should be.
I mean, a lot of posts to that. Like, I don't think we're trying to force anything down, you know, there's obviously information we don't have.
What does that do for you?
Well, the question comes down to whether or not you want to increase the budget for the two, or knowing that you have a, you're going to drive a surplus this year, that we just make that up within the existing budget.
Within the surplus.
Which is what we would have done if this position got added in September.
Correct.
Right? Yeah, we would have found it.
Yep.
That's probably easier for you, the ladder. It's a lot to go there.
Whatever the board wishes.
Can you, I didn't hear the second part.
We would leave the budget as it is right now, and just as you said, this would be treated as a situation where you had, you make the decision later after the budget is set, and we make it work within the existing budget.
Because we already have a surplus to cover it anyway.
As long as we don't exceed our authorized expenditure amount, we're okay. So we wouldn't hit 72 million, we'd hit 69, in this case, we'd hit 69, too.
If this, if this was a year where it was a lot tighter, and we weren't projecting a surplus, I couldn't say that, out of my conscience, but I can say that now, because the only way you're going to have surplus is if you have less expenditures in other budget, so we would have, we would be able to make that work for you. And that would give you the time, it sounds like, that you would.
Correct. So I would say, if you give us till, because May 9th is going to come up fast, if you give us until May 22nd, whatever that second board meeting is May, we'll come up to you with a list of potential positions that we feel, and we'll keep, obviously, we know the two music are on the table, but we'll come up with some other positions. But again, some of them we're not going to know, so I'll just leave it at that, you know? Class size is unpredictable at times, so. All right, good? Okay. Good, great. That's why we have a bunch of workshops.
Perfect.
It's a workshop, it's meant to be a discussion. Good? All right, so. Okay, so we've got through this, good, we're good here, tax levy, so 2.96, okay, awesome. So that's where we're going to go out at, 2.96. And then here's our final recommendations. Spending, spending plan stays intact. Obviously, if we put two more positions, though, the surplus will be smaller, so we're good there, we can stay with the same spending plan. Those enhancements, that will potentially change, but it doesn't matter, it's all within the 72.6 million, so it's just a matter of luck, we'll potentially amend that. Again, we're going to take care of that, which you've already seen. We'll still continue to have allowable fund balance for our policy. There's the tax levy. We are recommending, and you'll have to approve this, because that's a separate proposition to buy six buses, so that's part of this. Sorry, that's part of that, that replacement plan to get to the zero emission buses. You saw this last, I think you saw, yeah, you saw this last week.
At what point do you think one of those six buses are, and then you'll become zero emission buses?
2027, they have to all become, buy, you have to buy zero emission by 2027.
Be fully completed in 2035.
So we got nine years to totally outfit our fleet.
Okay, got it.
And so I added this, because we do this every year, and I wanted to show you, this, to me, is exciting, or what we're doing with our investments. So we have the, every year, we can do 100,000 capital project, or we can do a larger one, and/or a larger one. And you have to have cash on hand, but with the larger project, the $500,000 one, it works the same as a capital project, you just have to get the work done within a year. So that's the history of these projects, and we always started doing these when we had surplus and we had fund balance to allow us to do this, because without the fund balance, you can't, you can't afford to do it. So if you look at the 100,000 dollar projects, this is what we've done to date, we've done a lot of infrastructure improvements. When you look at the 500,000 projects that we started three years ago, we've done, again, a lot of improvements to infrastructure, stuff that we don't have to do through the capital project, and it kind of shaved off some, some needs there. This year, we would like to do a student investment in our music department, in our music suite at the high school, and create a new space that can be used for every student in the district, primarily, obviously, at the high school, but middle school too, and having that additional staff member split between the two is going to allow us to expand. So here's what we would like to do with that 500,000 dollar capital project. We'd like to create essentially a recording studio slash recording space within the music suite, that's correct footprint, so that, we call it the Apollo 13 castle. But within that, you see the red lines are some, some structure, we would create a space where all of our musicians can go in and record, they can write, they can produce, you can do podcasts in there. Mark did some research, Windsor Central School, their high school has one, some other school districts, what was the other school you shared?
We were working with, and Jackie helped facilitate, Sleepy Hollow has one, they've been working with us on the equipment, also up in Syracuse, the West Hill has one as well.
So really, really impressive, and so, we've got a middle, a middle school teacher, Ms. Maloney, is already having her kids in sixth grade write music and play. This just adds that next layer to our program, where kids could go in and start writing, producing, putting on Apple Music, I mean, really expanding and getting kids that aren't currently necessarily in a band, playing an instrument, but would be interested in doing that type of work. So we just think this is a great opportunity for the music program. Obviously, we'll get some training, we've got, you know, we've got a staff member, a faculty member who's willing to kind of take it on, but it really becomes a gem for the whole district, not just the high school. So we would like to give, we would like to use that 500,000 dollar project that we've done this work in the past to do that. And we could get it done, we thought possibly by September, believe it or not.
Oh, wow.
So we could be on the books for use in 24, 25.
Do you think you could, well, district representatives?
For a fee, for a very large fee. Yes.
I think you should call it Apollo 11, not Apollo 30. Apollo 30 is one of the few things.
Oh, yeah, sorry, probably could have used a better name there, but this is just